Public hearing. We have four items on the air. Item number one, change in property at 524-26 West Main. From V1, local business, to V3, restricted, just in Ward 3. Anyone like to talk or address this issue? Seeing none, I will close this part of the public hearing. Item number two, change in property at 4206 Leavell Pike, from R18, long density residential, to V3, this is in Ward 4. Anyone like to address or talk on this? Yes, you welcome Mike and state your name. Yeah, just come up and state your name.
My name is Bobby Lee, I live 2005 Dorchester Drive. I'm not a public speaker, as you'll soon see, but I'm not scared to talk in public. Most zoning changes occur as a result of someone or something somebody wants. And why are we getting this on? It's an inconvenience. And it is a landowner, a landowner that's adjacent, or the city, or the county. In this case, primarily it's due to property ownership of Purdue Real Estate Company in Nashville. They want to change. Why do they want to change? Well, they proposed, and their proposal was, they could get an exit off of 840, threw that right away at the end of 840. They're going to spend that much money for an exit, for some type of large expensive motel? Who could afford it? I don't think so. That was, that was just a ploy. That's not true. There's nobody going to be able to afford an exit off of 840 to build something on that piece of land that they're talking about. What businesses are better suited for this land? It's adjacent to, they could force then, the lady who owns that, who was next to them, there's an old dairy farm, Albert Rowland owned that dairy farm, he's passed away, she lives on Crowe Lane. They could force her to sell, because they already own two pieces of property there, a very small piece on the top of the hill, which has a standpipe for the pressure for the sewer line that City Lebanon fit into, for getting all that run all the way for Dale, who soon vacated the premises thereafter. The same business would still have it, because you've got other businesses down that road. Not opposed to that at all. What's this land suitable for? Well, it'd be nice, if you look at the top of the brackets of the area, you've got churches, a business that's a real estate company, and mostly churches down here there. And you don't run into any great businesses. If you look at the R3 zoning laws, they allow about anything from a killing station, to a service station, to theaters, broadcasting, receiving station, candy store, anything you can think of could go through there. And that's what they really want to do. They want to subdivide it, sell it off in small pieces, so they can make money off this great piece of property, when if you had anything decent, we're begging right now, as a city, to have people come down at the end of Hart and Drive. We've got all these spaces for nice businesses down through there, and nobody's taken up on it yet. Space is available for something decent. Why do you want to trash legal from, was it Blackwell, or a real estate company all the way to the top of the hill? I don't see it at all. I don't understand if this is important whether politics involved, or somebody's going to benefit from it, that hasn't revealed it, maybe somebody wants to get their land across the street, as on commercials, so they can sell it at a higher price. I don't know. I'm not, I can't see that far into it. But you can look at the existing uses. I wouldn't be, I wouldn't object to multi-family housing. Not my best choice, but I wouldn't object to it. Some type of residential use, because most, 99% of that's in housing in that area, and finishing up in housing on that dairy farm, whatever, would not be too objectionable. But to open it up for more filling stations, which we don't need, we've got plenty of them on 109 in there. Lowest prices in town are there, because there's that's too much competition, they can't seem to get all the business they want. I did receive an answer to my call from one of the members here, maybe he didn't get hung in time, he checked his phone. I did talk to Randall Hutso about it, and he wanted me to take notes as to what happened here. I don't think I'm going to be able to record what I had to say about it. Maybe it doesn't matter to Hillerveen, but I had to at least come up and voice my feelings over who's going to profit. I do not see the city of Lebanon, nor Wilson County, property from this particular change in zoning. I can't see it's going to add to the attraction for our area. There's plenty of areas for the larger businesses, and things that this Purdue Real Estate Investment Company can invest in, and not that particular two pieces of property. And I'm surprised you don't have a map of that to show that. But it's two triangles they own, one at the top of the hill, a small farm with a farmhouse with a barn on it. And there's a couple of houses in that area too, that they don't have to zoom down to get it like they want it. That's on between there and Crowe Lane. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Didn't have questions, just comments.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this issue? Okay.
Hello, everybody. My name is William Cartwell. I live at 139 Upton Heights, and I'm here because we found out over in that area that the county and the city-
Wait, wait, just a second. This is the wrong time for that. We're having a public hearing on four specific items.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you. Item number three, adopting plan of services for annexation of 45, 445 Carver Lane. Also annexing 445 Carver Lane, 6.29 acres in City Lebanon. See anyone who wants to address that? Okay, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Called to order, the council meeting, invocation, Tim, if you will, and Michael, who's in the plane. Second, all in favor? And December 2nd, regular call, city council meeting.
Second.
First and second, all in favor? Okay. I don't have time for new questions and conclusions, if anyone would like to address, now is the time.
Sorry to interrupt everybody. Like I said, my name is William Cartwell. I live at 139 Upton Heights. And we found out only early part of, the latter part of last week, that the county and the city is planning on switching properties, and if this goes through, that from East High Street down to Rogers Street will be closed. And we as a community, community is very opposed to this, because it would affect not only us, but we feel like it would affect, as far as when we need emergency transportation to get down through there, that they will not be able to get in there, such as fire trucks, ambulances. There are deliveries that's made up through there, that come through with semis, they're not able to make those turns up to West Forest, or En Rogers Street to get down to there. But more than that, we're, really feel like that we were not even told about this. No one over our way was notified of this change, which we haven't thought about. Our executive director, he has not even been told, or he wasn't told about this. It was like it was just trying to be done, without us knowing any knowledge of it. Now, like I said, we, our news late, so we're not really prepared for everything, but I do have a petition that I have started. I hadn't got to get to everybody in our community, but I know that they are willing to sign it, and I know that they are willing to come to the next council meeting, to let know how strongly we are opposed to having that street closed.
I know I was at the county commission meeting, but it's not on the agenda tonight, so there'll be plenty of time for you to collect names.
Okay, but like I said, as far as we know, you know, we, no one over our way has even been told anything about it, you know, so we wondered if there's going to be a public meeting on this issue, or anything, so we can, uh, voice our opinions as a community about how we feel about it, because it's really strongly going to affect a lot of people over our way. We have a lot of older people that live over that way, with the stores right up the street, they use that road pretty regularly, you know, going, walking back and forth to stores and things. And we just really strongly would love to keep that street open, because it's so beneficial to us. And also, we've noticed that there's a lot of members of Hiller Press Church, that when they're leaving, so that their traffic won't back up so bad over Trisdale, a lot of them cut through there as well, as well as Highland Heights Church. You know, that road, it may not mean much to God, but it really means a lot to us down in that community. And we just want y'all to really consider, keep us in mind, before this thing just is pushed through, and y'all close that street on us.
Thank you. Yes?
I'd like to speak to you, I'm Tom Murphy, 2011 Dorchester Drive, Lebanon, about the 4206 Leavell Pike, rezoning. First of all, I only found out about it by Haxby, I guess. I don't know what your advertisement is, but it's not getting around too good. The science is so little, nobody pays attention to it. Think about it every day, and I never notice it, until somebody pointed it out. But rezoning it to commercial, I live there, on Leavell Pike, not closely, but by a corner, in Tucker, yeah, Metis. And I moved here 11 years ago, to take my home here. And of course, I'm in a business where we pay attention to where population is going to be growing, and what things are going to happen, busting communities, stuff like that. And I know that Wilson County, I don't know whether you'd like to or not, but I would like to, be in a run-in like Murkensboro, and Great Wood, Franklin, as far as growth. And I think if you start, if we start mixing this commercial business right in close to the subdivision, like we're talking about there, that it will deter the growth, deter people from living here. They want to get further out there, or go somewhere else where the zoning is, won't let that happen. So I'm coming, and there's a lot of other people out there who feel the same way I do. And I just happened to find out last minute, and I'm going to come in and make my comments about it, and let you know that there's a lot of other people. I'll get a petition if it helps.
Thank you.
My name's Derek Dodson, the last city council meeting. I address and ask questions about drainage on the reconstruction of the square. I'm not going to discuss this tonight, I'll make this very brief in regard to this. T-Dot sent me a map of the drainage of the square, and I guess Jeff Baines probably has a copy of this, but I strongly suggest all of you get a copy of this and study it, and perhaps ask people who live in the local margins, what they think with regard to this. Welcome, Councilor, Councilor Ash, very briefly, with regard to my presence in this microphone on a semi-regular basis. I have a track record, a history of usually only getting involved in land use issues. Land use issues where either a, when I consider a nitwit policy proposal is in play, or and/or deception is in play, whereby few to no else in the community will get involved, and thereby I become a backstop, so to speak, in my approximately 12 major policy battles in this community, county, or city. Fortunately, for the ruling of the city position that I've advocated each time, has prevailed best, as enough public officials have stepped up and done the right, right thing. Mayor Craighead, I want to address the last council meeting, when we, we went back and forth regarding to Fairness Friday, Black Friday, and I took, took issue, not with your efforts to bring shoppers to the city on Music City Star. And the first thing I said when I walked in the microphone with regard to that issue, was that I was not taking issue with your efforts there, and that no one could take issue with your efforts there. My issue with you was with regard to you and the Lebanon Democrat stating that people took advantage of the train, when indeed only 27 people did, to come here and shop, approximately half of those children. You did the same thing, well, after I spoke, you tried to spin it, as I had said, that I was taking issue with, with your efforts there. I was not. I was taking issue with the dishonesty of the Lebanon Democrat with regard to the success of people riding on the train. I did the very same thing the next day on the Coleman Walker Show. What you did was a disingenuous spin, which I consider an outright a lie. Also, as I stood here at the last council meeting, as an example of many of the disingenuous spin incidents of your term in office, was December the 3rd, Lebanon Democrat, first page, where this council deferred the event center, and you fought it, and yet in the newspaper, you took credit for it. I say that as a preference to the second of three disingenuous spins since the last council that you have engaged in. The following two were also on the Coleman Walker Show. On the Coleman Walker Show, you said with regard to ordinance 4796, which is Conferensive Update, Zoning Code, and Atlas, you said the first reading it passed 6-0. Then you said, for some reason, this time, I'm quoting you, "Well, we're all, well, we've always said, we've always said, that's what you said, we've always said, it's not a big rush, it's at y'all's pace, the council. But for some reason, they counseled, prefer it, last night, and then you said in a minute, there's two seconds, we need to get this passed." And you said that with haste. Well, this council was well, well aware, that at the last council meeting, Councilwoman Warman eloquently spoke for the referral for that ordinance, as did the city planner, Paul Porter, as did city planning commission chair, Maggie Luthusky. There was no doubt in anyone's mind why that was, why that was deferred. You know, the Coleman Walker Show, it's a great mystery to you, why it was deferred, and you have a history of ramming throughs through the council, and you have indeed tried to ram that through the council, and it's not we have given the council time, it's the city planner has tried to give the city council time, and the planning commission, not you tried to ram it through. And lastly, on the Coleman Walker Show, and I, this is short, and I will read this verbatim, these are your words. This is regard to Good Sports. It is still a very viable project, and we're working on it. Right now, we can't tell them where their lot is, because we don't know where the road is. We're both eager to get started, you, the city, and Good Sports, eager to get started, but we've got to get some preliminary stuff done first. By the way, I interrupted myself in a second, perhaps feasibility study, now I continue. Once we, and I'm almost through, once we get where we know the bridge will go, then we can start inviting lots out, so that we can know what will be our property, and what the developers, what the developers want to donate to the city, and everything like that. So a couple of things. One is, back earlier in the year, you stated that Legends Drive extension will cost approximately 3.5 million. Well, everyone sitting up there, and a whole lot more people know, that there's going to have to be a bridge span across Legends Drive, and it's not going to cost anywhere near 3.5 million. That was a disingenuous statement when you made it, you quoted Don Chambers, you used that. Secondly, and lastly, with regard to what you said there, on February the 18th, when you tried to ram through your revenue proposal, and came up with Good Sports at the last second, a miracle, to try to get your event center passed, but refused to disclose who Good Sports were in your last minute email to the council, you told them they had to pass this immediately, because otherwise the city could possibly lose out on the land donation. Yet you're on the radio saying, "We don't even know where the lots will be, what they could possibly donate." Yet on February the 18th, you were, you were vociferously trying to get the council to pass, pass that, on the basis of they were going to lose this land donation. And Councilman Burton clearly stated, and this went on and on, that how could there even be a land donation, because Jake Eddley, Bobby Capers don't own the land, Wilson Bank trusts us, and they can't donate land they don't own. You do not have, and have no understanding with those people. You still don't, to this day, as far as anyone knows. My point is, just since the last council meeting, there's three instances of you being in, of you exercising a disingenuous spirit, and it goes on and on. And you can sit and firing yourself. If you look at the police department, the standard conduct, I don't think if it applied to you, you'll be here very long. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address, council?
Hi, Mayor. I am Kristi Nixon, and I live on Dorchester-
Excuse me just a second. I just, she got it, I just, my child will have it for us. Sorry.
My name is Kristi Nixon, and I live on Dorchester, and we appreciated the neighbors earlier that have come up and spoke. We just hope that that part of Lebanon could be homes, where that people can raise their families, because that's where we have. And Mayor, I know many years ago, you had a house in our subdivision.
First one.
That's right. Very nice place back then. So we're very proud of that area. And if y'all hadn't moved us there, I wouldn't be here, so, but thank you for your time.
Yes. Hi, my name is Chad Paul. I live at 17 Cypress Hill Drive, it's in the Spence Creek neighborhood. Yeah, I'm just looking for, Councilwoman Warman has responded to me, but with regard to the really bad traffic in 109, when the Christmas lights happened, it's usually Friday and Saturday, it blocks off that, and there's, I'm trying to find difficult finding who in the county or the city can help with any traffic management problems. It's kind of weird property, because Lebanon City covers the intersection, and kind of two corners of it, but the property lights is just outside that non-county, and it's a state highway road. And nobody seems to want to own it, and that's where I'm just looking for frustration. I appreciate Councilwoman Warman's advocacy. Thanks.
Kind of heard of that issue, you're late today, and I think it's being on TV, kind of, it reaches back to you.
I really didn't see it, but just to share with Carl, what I actually did is I emailed and tried to get everybody in the loop, and then also my justice said he was going to reach out to the county folks that were trying to help down there. So I think that, you know, Noah's going to be widened, maybe not even next Christmas, I'm not sure. So, but I think on it as much as we can be, and we just have to do some traffic correction, just like we did with Mayor. So, that's, I guess that's all I can say, and I thought he might be here, but anyway, that's what wrapped with it, and that happened pretty quick today.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, but it's, at the same time, I don't know what else we can do, Mayor.
Anyone else like to address, council? Seeing none, we'll move on to, your honor. Yeah, I was trying to let the little beginning understand the property. Yes.
My name is John Harris, I live on Harris Lane. Moved here nine years ago, to start a family with my mother in my life, and my two little boys down there. Since that time, I've had several relationships with the police department. We suffered a purse snatching, my 70-plus-year-old mother out of Walmart, right at the front door. The conduct of the police department was wonderful, above and beyond the call of duty. Officer Huff came out several weeks later, met with my mother. When somebody contacted us, that they had found the purse, fearing that it might actually be a part of a crime that would further terrorize my mother. He offered instead to go and secure that property. This was one incident. We have suffered a vandalism in our property. We had somebody spinning out donuts. 20 minutes later, officer shows up, knocks on the door, he's got perpetration. They do a verbal apology to this. I think they want a lot farther to stopping that type of activity than simply us pursuing criminal charges. Since that time, we've had a home invasion. March 17th, 2011, 8:30 in the morning on a Wednesday, school day, knock on the door. Guy comes in, puts a gun to my mother's head. There was no doubt from the investigation, that they intended to kill my family. The officers were, hit him with professionalism. They secured my gun, took it in for processing, should, should happen. But they didn't do it before, they made sure that I could still protect my family, and I really appreciated that. I wasn't treated like a number. I was a question. I lived in Houston most of my life, Houston, Texas. Grew up in the hotel business, stage four, 28 years of dealing with state, local, federal, police, attorneys, juries, judges. Never felt so comfortable than at home. And though Houston has a very good reputation as a tactical force, the police here are right there with them. And I firmly believe that that is a direct reflection on Chief Bond. It says, leadership of the department, and I'm sorry about being emotional, there is an emotional tide to all of this. Because my son, Bobby, some of you know, was diagnosed last year with a class IV brain tumor, one of the deadliest, most aggressive forms of tumor a child can have. Weeks of being in the hospital, recovering from brain surgery. Bobby comes home, 60% chance of surviving. And I see police lined up down the street, and I see the fire department, and it was just very touching. It was touching to Bobby, and I assure you, that helped Bobby. It led to his spirit, to see such community people, heroes that he could look up to. Again, a direct reflection on leadership to Bond. Never heard of anything like that being done anywhere else. I'm proud to be a part of this community. Chief Bond was a total stranger to me until that time. I only dealt with officers. But after that time, for some reason, he took a shine to our family situation. I don't know why. He couldn't collect his paycheck, done his job, cleared his time, went home every day, did everything that everybody else does here every day. You've got bills and problems to take care of. You don't have to worry about us. But he did. Above and beyond the call of duty, just as everyone in his department. And I'm very concerned when I see in the newspaper, our leadership dismissing him via an email, having been 28 years in business, restaurant hospitality, that is an incredible insult to man's service. He deserves that. I don't know the circumstances, and I would love to hear the circumstances. As a private business, I could dismiss my employees without having to explain myself to my customers. But in this instance, I think we, as a public, need to have some explanation, clarification on why he's being dismissed at Christmas time, while he's down on that belief, via a letter. I understand he deserves it. And in this time of the last six years that we have suffered as a community under an economy, as a country, and our local community- as a country, and our local community, hope and change that hasn't done us benefit, I think right now, change in this department, anybody outside of the department coming in, is going to fundamentally change the morale of our department, whether it's captains, sergeants, or our patrolmen. It's going to affect the fundamental makeup of that department, and frankly, I don't want any changes to our police department. We have a wonderful police department, I'm not kidding, and I'm not privy to their permission that you're privy to. I wish I was, I hope to be. But from my standpoint, I would ask you to reinstate Chief Bone and continue his leadership. Thank you.
I'm Councilman Mayor Andy. Most of you know I'm April Bowen. I'm Chief Bowen's wife, and we're just here tonight to really ask you guys to consider this 25 years of love and service to our community as we reach resolution. Thank you.
Hey, John Bowen's father wrote Scott Bowen. Mayor, I'm very, very disappointed with you, the way this thing was happening. Been a pastor of this town for 23 years, to see such as this going in our community is sad, sad, sad. I cannot believe that you could stand up and do such as this after the people of Lebanon had voted you in. But I'm going to promise you one thing tonight, you will be voted out for long.
Hi there. I'm speaker. Any questions? My father was at the night center in London. Oh, sorry. Bobby Wire.
We mic'd him.
Sorry.
It's not plugged in.
Actually, it's a, what's the next one?
Name of the speaker is tomorrow.
He has commented multiple times, the impact that the police department has had. We are issues at the night center, unfortunately, all too often, but he said he has noticed a dramatic increase in basically the readiness of police efficiency in this department since Scott Bowen has been the police chief. Not only has he been in Peckham, in that particular area, we are also a Gold Star family. My brother was killed in action. He is also someone who has stood up for veterans and families who have lost people. So, I think it is important to know that the veterans in this community, the families who have lost someone, have been beyond impressed by the city of Lebanon and how much you all have done, especially recently, the memorial that has gone up, how much that means to us. And yes, the folks that have taken part in that, we are so grateful. And to see my parents so affected by this, and to know that Scott Bowen had a part as far as helping our father on a daily basis, or work, I just think it's important that we, you think about that, as we make these decisions, to know the impact people have on the community and the impact that a change in leadership could possibly have at a time that we need unity more than ever. Lebanon needs that. He has brought that to this community by the amount of things that he has done constantly as far as community service and children events to show that Lebanon is given part of this. We are on the app now, and part of that is because of Scott Bowen and his willingness to stand up for everyone who's in this community. I just felt important to say, and my dad wanted to make sure that everybody knew how helpful he had been for him.
Yeah, I just, like you add, I've been at the motel approximately 22 years, I'm the day manager. It's a budget motel, and we do have our problems, but it's not, nothing that the ownership has not paid quite a lot of money into that motel. Look at it from the outside, it's nice. However, we don't have the option, if somebody comes to check in, like they rented an apartment or a home, to get a, you know, a big report on. We just got to size them up the best we can to take a driver's license. And from what I understand, I don't know much about making meth lab, it doesn't take very long. We don't know what they're carrying in or anything else in their suitcases. And we have had the police department, I mean, you read the paper, you know where it is, you folks all know it. And the police department in Lebanon, Tennessee is excellent. The officers that come down there, I talked to quite a few over the years. Like I said, I've been there approximately 22 years, and they continuously have been improving, and that's a fact. And like I say, I don't know, when the officers get up in the morning, they just bring up this much prison or problems, but I'll tell you, when they come to the motel, they're nothing but class. And they make you feel, you know, like you're not bothering them, like you really want to be there and help them. I feel very strong, as I said, I've been there 22 years, and I've seen this police department improve immensely. And I have to say, Scott Bowen is the leader of them, so evidently, he's one heck of a job. And I can't have much of it here all night. I'm not a public speaker either, I just wanted to say what I want to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you all for your comments, and, you know, as we kind of go through this issue. We have Jeff wanting me to relay this, Christmas and New Year's on the sanitation pickup. Thursday's routes will move to Friday, and Friday will move to Saturday, so, for both Christmas and New Year's. Let's see, Indiana didn't give the ordinance, drop in ordinance 14-4811, no, 19, which is what we're on.
I want to start out, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, it's time for the round. I'd like to, Jeff, I guess if you get the word, Randy, we're thinking about him. I know he's, that's a long ways to go, just to get out of looking at my driving problem, I'll tell you what.
You'll be back.
He's telling me he's not getting that season, I'm checking the back. Also, with the Bowen family, I hope Scotty does well in his. Then, I want to finish up with one little funny one. I want to appreciate everybody, of course, all of you know, my dad's in, and he was here at the last meeting. And I want to thank the media, because, you know, they took the picture with him and Joe Hayes and the mayor. I had the picture showing it to Dad a few days later, and he said, "Yeah, that was the night that Joe Hayes, we went for Joe Hayes." And I said, "Well, who's the old man in the picture?" And he laughed, and he said, "That'd be Mayor Craighead." Took me to Christmas.
First of all, I wish, I wish everyone to have a Merry Christmas and a safe and very sound New Year. Jeff, we had talked to New York, Tennessee about those polls, and they give you a start, they.
They have my, I'll be there. They really care about my.
That's all I have.
Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. Randy, we're glad that he got through. I hate why so many of you are here today. I mean, this is, I mean, I just hate why so many of you are here. But I will ask you to ask yourselves, why aren't you here more often? Why aren't you advocating for this community with this passion more often? More times than not, we don't have anybody that is not directly related to something going on in here other than Derek. And I've said it a million times, I don't always agree with him, but I respect the heck out of his participation in the process. We had a special call for a half, a special election for a half percent sales tax. 8.92% of the registered voters in this community felt it was their civic responsibility to get out, and that's wrong. If you're going to impact change within this community, you've got to show up all the time. You've got to be here for the good, you've got to be here for the bad, you've got to give your guidance and get your feedback out there all the time. And I appreciate those of you that come out. Every time you have an issue, I appreciate it, but we need you to be out more often. We do need you to be out more often. We're going to have some tough decisions. Employees out here, I've seen retirees out here. Robert's sick, but I'm still going to bring it up. Based on the existing healthcare that we have today, we have an $18 million deficit for what we're going to look to put out with the healthcare for the retirees and the workforce that we have today, so we're going to have to make some difficult choices going down the road. You know, we have to look at some creative ideas, we have to look at some solutions. I was just down in Williamson County, and for some reason, and we're going to have to figure out how they're doing it, Williamson County, they do their own healthcare. They self-insure from a healthcare standpoint, but they also self-insure from a workforce comp standpoint. And we're trying to get some information to see how that's done. But if anybody's out there that has a recommendation, has an option, has some feedback, please share it, because I believe truly, that's one of the biggest issues that we have going for, for funded mandate, that we've got to figure out, how are we going to pay for it? How are we going to take care of everybody? Because like I said, right now, based on our estimates, it's between $16.7 and $18 million. That's all I have.
Welcome.
Thank you. I ran a little back for him, and I'll speak up. I don't know what's happened. At the proper time tonight, I'm going to ask the ordinance 14-4800 to be deferred for 30 days, so that I can speak to the residents and also the, uh, the, uh, the. Thank you.
Take it, Bernard.
I don't have anything, thank you. The only thing I have to say is everybody, I hope everybody has the same, a happy holiday, Christmas, and enjoy, enjoy life with family, friends, et cetera. I just think that's probably the bottom line of all of it. I appreciate Mr. Carl coming up here and telling us about the traffic. I know it's not getting better, and it's a successful endeavor out there, which I'm glad it is. But I think that we've got the right leadership working on it, so we'll just let them do their job, because they're in their hands. And that's just all I have, Mayor, I appreciate that. Thank you.
First here, we have the consent agenda, and I'll just include it in the reading a bit, okay? Ordinance 14-4799, ordinance, a resolution, 14-1858, ordinance 14-4801, ordinance 14-4812, and ordinance 14-4813, and ordinance 14-4814 are on the consent agenda. I pulled out on number two for further discussion. All in favor of the consent agenda is presented?
A motion.
Have a first, I'm sorry. Have a motion.
Motion approved.
First, okay.
A discussion, Mayor. The only thing, I just had a question on, and Miss Lisa's not here tonight, so I guess whoever's, I don't know, Mr. Trump's here too, y'all got to drop them like flies in his truck too. Anyway, I just wanted to ask, all the vehicles, one thing I do want to say is what other entities we did those for? Because I think there is probably, I know that everybody's in the state conference, I mean, that's all proper, but I would like to know what the bottom line is. Remember, we, Andy, we talked about local lenders and all that, and I wish that was all, we could do all that. But my question is, I got a call about the vehicles, and the question was, what are we paying per the units, whatever they are, and how did it compare with capital, or how did it compare with whatever? So, what I like to do, because I don't really know, because I think we're backing them out, and I understand that, because that's the way we do things. Sometimes we just break the specs, and somebody meets the specs, but going forward, if somebody could share that with Miss Lisa, to, you know, just do some canvassing on the expense with the same specs, I just, I'd like to do that. And it might be totally all good, but I definitely want to see that done. I mean, I'd just like to know, in any, she just calls me, or she can email, or whatever, I'd just like to see that done. And it's probably just all fine, we'll do it, and I don't think it's not, but I'd just like to know, because the calls are not bad, so. If you don't mind, if y'all can share that with Lisa, then she can just, you know, dive in and just tell us, you know, whatever. If that's all right, okay. I'm all good, I just wanted to ask if somebody would relay that.
All in? All in favor? Poses? Okay. Now, we'll go to ordinance 14-4800, that's for the second meeting, they're changing property at 4206 Leable Pike, Mar 18 to 33.
Chairman, I vote that I'm going to speak deferred for 30 days.
Okay, I have a, I have a first and a second, I'm asking for a deferral of ordinance 14-4800. Any other discussion? New business, council approval of compliance of retail package store. First, weapons, all in favor? Poses? Item number two here. Didn't have a count of, didn't have a.
None.
Yeah, all right. Approval of a certificate patch of retail.
None of mine.
Yeah. First and second, all in favor? Poses? I have a nominated councilman to represent us on the Lebanon Municipal Planning Commission. I'd like to nominate Mr. Bernie Ash.
I would say that, or Farm Lab.
I have a first.
You have that.
A second.
I guess that are asking.
And all in favor of that support? Okay, thank you, Bernie. Now, we have councilman nomination of Mayor Proton.
I'm nominating Captain Warren.
Second. Have a first and a second. Ms. Warren, all in favor?
I have to vote for myself, though.
I don't know.
Wouldn't like to date my students.
Poses?
No. I don't know, it is. Why am I not surprised? Why would I vote for you for mayor? Why would I vote for you for mayor, Proton?
Pass. All right, ordinance 14-4816, first reading to authorize the line-up transfer for the water distribution department. At first.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Pass.
Or is 14-4817, first reading to authorize the motion amendments for donations to the Veterans Memorial Flame. All right, at first and second.
This is no way, please, the money was permitted, what's the donation?
This is no way in peace the mind that would permit what's the donation is.
The, this is, it put a, just for an ordinance to have a dollar amount, it has $6,000.
But that's, that's our donation. We're not, we're not soliciting. That's what we're going to commit to.
Yes.
It gets it off of too in a line item.
The projected cost is that it would be, by the timeframe that they have set, it would be less than mine.
Right, and I don't know if they're going to be 24 or 12, we don't know, but it's not fixed either. And every year will reassess it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pos. Ordinance 14-4818, first reading to establish and fill a new position at the drainage crew. Have a first. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos. Pass.
Read.
Before we get, ordinance 14-4819, do we have any outside legal counsel?
I'll make notes and we'll praise.
Have a first.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pos. Pass. Thank you. Everyone have a Merry Christmas.